Okay. Now it says record. That would mean it's recording, right? Miss Highsmith will open.
Mm-hmm.
Step to table.
You can sit up there. Here's the chairs for you. Come on, that was awesome.
How come everybody's behind? The whole front row is open.
It's the way we were in high school. We'll continue it right now. Right.
When I go to church, I sit very front. I want to see what's, see and hear what's going on. Most everybody sits in the back. I see. Okay, that makes sense, too.
Two pieces of business. Just easy ones.
Jesus.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the budget meeting. Please stand for the pledge. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning.
Morning.
I almost want to sit in the front seat. I don't want to be on the table either. I could get barred. Home from yardarm or something. How are you?
I'm getting better.
That's a good thing.
It's a good way to go.
Yeah, I saw her out last night. Seven o'clock. Running around town.
There's a fire board meeting. It certainly helped, you know, I would rather have the pain healing as compared to the pain I had before this evening. So. Okay, we have a couple things to take care of first.
Yeah, just real quick and easy. One is just paperwork from Scott. And he is using Anderson's Vermillion for the audit on his office that we agreed to months ago.
Okay.
And that's just the paperwork.
Okay.
But I thought it should be at least presented.
All right. Do you need to make a motion or that's been done?
It's already been done. We are able to allow Scott to move forward on that.
When are they going to start on your audit, Scott?
Right now tentative date is November nineteenth, I believe.
And how long do they think it'll take?
Crap me, it might be eighteenth. Right, and they're eighteenth and nineteenth. And they say it, they've got it scheduled for two of their experts for up to a week.
Oh, really?
Well, they say it's just depending, but they say that they come expected for the week, so.
Good.
They think what their experts did, it didn't take a day.
Fair enough.
They said they've seen in the past where they expect two days and it takes a while.
Yeah, this, we put on the agenda under Items for Discussion, Review and Action. And this is the junk vehicle grant for Tammy in the amount of seven thousand seven seventy point four nine. And she would like us to sign it. And so with that, I would move that we sign the grant as continuing grant for junk vehicle.
In the amount of seven thousand dollars. Seventy-seven point nine. Seventy-seven point forty-nine cents. It's moved and said then that we sign this grant with Montana Department of Environmental Quality for the junk vehicle program in the amount of seven thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars and forty-nine cents. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The poll's the same. Motion came. You know, this grant has been going for when I was taking the quarter, it was, and that was a couple days ago.
Eileen, I got the paperwork for step three.
Uh-huh.
But they have the one to sign off sheet wrong, so it needs to be done around it all next week.
Yeah.
Okay, because I'll have to get it over to you.
Okay.
When they, Chad Newman hasn't said we'd be updated sign off sheet on it. It's got Brandon, and Brandon wants me to sign off on it. Deputy Jack was actually the coordinator guy now for the contact, so.
Yeah, I'll be around with her.
Okay.
With my help, I'm not sure if she's too good at convention and I can put, so.
Okay. Well, I'll get in touch with you then.
Okay.
It is? Yeah.
Musical chairs.
I guess I'm going to turn this over to Debbie and Laura. They're the ones working so hard on the kitchen. Budget. If not, you're laid up. I appreciate every drop of work that they put into it, which was many hours. And they've done a great job, along with the girls from Helena, so. To that, I'll turn it over to you two.
All right, what do you think, Debbie?
Sorry, the general fund, I guess? I don't know if it's the easiest.
Do you want to, do you want to start with maybe an overview? And if you go on, I can go ahead and start in. I think just for your benefit, since you've been gone, I don't know how many of the YouTube meetings you've had a chance to watch, but what we did this year is, and you guys all have the sheet. And I think you guys each have these, but just in case. Debbie, I don't know if you made one, too. But what we did in working with Lewis and Clark County is we kind of mirrored what other counties around the state are doing with this year's budget. And last year fiscal thirteen is the first column of numbers you see under fiscal year thirteen, where it says actual mills. The total mills allowed were one hundred and seven point one eight, and that, the total for the A mill is thirteen thousand thirty-eight, which you see up at the top. And then those are the different departments and the number of mills that they got. I did not include road or solid waste or break out general fund or all purpose fund. Road is set by the state. Solid waste is set by fees. And we really are focused on the floating mills. So that's why it's, it's here, just for clarity. A couple of things in that list that need to be addressed are airport. Two years ago, they had point eight seven mills, and they got reduced to zero last year. Weed by law is supposed to have one point six over the five voted. And they got point seven eight. So if you go over to the right, Lewis and Clark, and again, a lot of the counties, mostly counties around the state, what they do is they utilize a formula provided by Department of Revenue that helps a county to determine estimate what the value of a mill is going to be before we get the valuation so that budgeting can start. What they do is they then go to department heads with that estimation, and they give you that. Last year, you had this many mills that was valued at this much. The inflationary increase is one point oh three percent. Therefore, your mills should increase to this number. And the estimated cost is, it was estimated for us was thirteen thousand five hundred. Actual is thirteen thousand five hundred and forty, so you can see it was extremely close. So that would give a department head the parameters they need. These are the mills you're getting. Live within that for your budget. So that's what these numbers are. It's just an increase from the number of mills the previous year with the one point oh three percent inflationary increase. And there's, there's some things we need to look at in that. That in a perfect world, we'd be done with the budget at this point. It's not a perfect world, so there's some things we need to look at. So I guess, any questions on step one?
No, I'm fine.
Okay. All right. All right, Claire's right. Um, so.
Have they all got this?
Yeah, yeah. Some of the things, like I said, we need to address airport. We need to address weed. The other thing we need to keep an eye on per Nancy from Lewis and Clark County is planning. Planning has not been getting any mills. They got an influx of money with the subdivisions in oh eight and have been living on that. It will come to a point where land use planner on GIS is going to be higher than the savings they had accrued from a leave. So we may have to look in the future at adding some mills to planning. We're not there yet. She thought it might not be in for next year or the year after. But it's something for us to keep an eye on.
The way the economy's changing, the real estate market's changing. We're going to see more subdivisions.
We very well could, yeah. And we've got our planner working on a lot more than just subdivisions now. She's working on the Toston issues. She's working on the boundary issues. She's working on road conflicts. So she's doing a whole lot more than just subdivisions. She truly is just a land use planner for the term. So that's, that is step one. The other thing that changed this year is, and you guys, I think, all saw here in Department of these sheets. And what they have is the, the department, I'm looking at all purpose fund, which is general fund. And it has the revenues per the bars chart at the top. That was not arbitrarily done. It was done following bars. Taxes and special assessments, licenses and permits, and the governmental charges for services, fines and forfeitures miscellaneous and interest earnings. And then it gives us a rundown so that we can see what previous years did, which is good for budgeting at this point. And this is what we used instead of the single sheet that we've had in the past that we could get more of an overview when we have this for each department.
I never got one of those.
Okay, somebody you may not have, and that's probably because you've got a-
General fund.
And general fund, yeah. A lot of the departments, including general fund, because of you guys, actually ended the year with a surplus. So there was no reason to come to you with a need to change anything. So you're good. Yeah.
We'll just set it current level then, last year's level.
Mm-hmm, yeah. But what happened is in the past, we've had kind of use or lose it. At the end of the year, if you've got extra money in your budget, you knew that you would likely lose it. So that's when people would spend on some things they needed. A lot of department heads were very, very responsible. Some were not. And so this way of setting those parameters of the mills actually makes department heads allies with the county rather than adversaries. Again, you guys have all been allies regardless, but so at the end of the year, by doing it this way, when there's a surplus, you keep it in your budget. You can put it into operations. You can put it into a CIP for down the road. Perhaps you need a printer, a new computer, new chair, desk, whatever. It gives you the opportunity to actually be a whole lot more proactive and frugal with your budgets and save that money for the end of the year. And save it for a couple of years for something big that you might need. So that's the other change.
Do you want to tell what the Sauer Commission did to?
Oh, yeah, the Broadwater County Compensation Board by law meets before the budget season gets too much underway. And they determine what will be the raises, if any, for elected officials in the county. The compensation board met twice and agreed upon, it is made up of elected officials and citizens. And they agreed upon a forty-five cent per hour raise per employee, or excuse me, per elected official. And if possible, the sixty dollars in health insurance that was added in April to continue, have the county actually pick that up and continue with what we've been doing, just with that added sixty dollars a month per employee. That would start in October. We've been paying the forty-sixty split through September only. So October first, employees would be subject to the hundred and four dollar increase. So with the compensation board, the county would pick up the full hundred and four dollar increase if we can afford it. It's always been the practice of the county commission to pass on the raise to all employees that they vote on for us. And I don't see any reason to change that this year.
You're done?
Aye, for now, yes.
Okay, Deb, go ahead. Tell us what you've done.
Well, like Laura said, we just took the floating mills, which were a total of one hundred and seven point eight eight, and basically took the inflationary increase and spread it out amongst all the departments based on last year's, which is what Laura just explained, and tried to come up with that for everybody and plugged it into the sheet so everybody could kind of see what the increase was going to do to their expenditures versus the revenues. They don't have all this, so this is what you might have.
If, if you want a lead, I can just jump right in. I guess I have a couple of questions for Debbie. And that is, can we afford the health insurance to do a hundred and four dollars per month per employee receiving health insurance?
Yes.
All right, does that leave, last year, we put in a cushion? That was Natalie's idea. I think it was a good one with what happened in April. For just such an event, do we have the ability to have a cushion if we paid a hundred and four per employee for the health insurance?
At a preliminary glance, yes. With the current numbers, with what we spent last year and what we're expected to get this year, it does leave a little bit of a cushion. Have to leave a little cushion because we don't know how the Obamacare Affordable Care Act and the pools and the exchanges are going to affect us. That might mean there's more employees that currently aren't eligible because they don't work thirty-two hours, being forced to pick up insurance because the minimum is thirty hours. They work thirty hours or more, we'll have to pick them up and offer them coverage.
That's through Obamacare?
Mm-hmm.
So with the, what would be the cushion? Do you know off the top of your head? I think our cushion last year was fifteen thousand, which actually, we, we ended the year with a surplus also in health insurance. What I don't want to do is deplete all of that and end up with a negative next year, but if, if something happened, we just wouldn't be able to pick up anymore if we don't have enough of a cushion. But that, that wouldn't preclude us from taking up the hundred and four.
I think it's a very smart move to have a cushion there because we all know that insurance keeps going up. Obamacare, none of us know how that's going to shake out. I mean, you could throw a whole lot of papers up in the air and however it comes out. And I mean, and I don't know that they know. And listening to Bacchus, he says it's going downhill. So I don't know. But I think it's really important that we do have that cushion in there.
I don't know if we could, we had a whole while for a while on hundred and four increases.
Well, it sounds to me like there's enough money to be the hundred and four with still a cushion there. Is that correct, Debbie?
Mm-hmm.
Here's our problem. Our vote in May or June was only through September. We, we should decide on something, be it continuing the status quo or including, or increasing to the hundred and four so that our employees don't see a sixty dollar hit on their paychecks starting in October. So not doing anything, I think, is, is the worst choice. Those are two options. Certainly, there would be a third. I'm sure if we, you know, used our imaginations, but the, the audit last year, and I didn't bring a copy, and I can go get it if you guys want to see it, but Tom Hayes from Denning and Downey had a whole paragraph in the audit about the fact that our employees are paid under market rate wages. One of the ways to help compensate for that is a nice health insurance or benefits package, which we do have already. But definitely something to, to keep in mind.
I think some of our employees are going backwards. I don't know how many of you, but you were hired at a certain rate, and then we keep getting hit with more insurance and more insurance. And your cake home is less. I can't say that that's for each one of you, but I do know that it is on, on some of them. It is definitely the case. And yet the expenses at the grocery store and fuel and all that keep going up, and so I'd like to be able to give them something.
Should we know that that's an issue we need to come back to and continue on?
Yes.
Okay. Some other question or comments? We have been paying the juvenile transport, juvenile detention transport out of Pilt. We carried over about seven thousand dollars last year that was unspent. We put eleven thousand into the fund. I think we should do the same. And I'm proposing that we either know that it's six, seven thousand, and if we need to put more in, we do that as the need arises. I guess that would be my suggestion, but we address it now versus putting some in just to sit there. Because once it goes in there, it can't come out. It's a nice thought, I know it's not realistic, that we could never have another need. What do you guys think?
That would be called utopia.
I know, I know.
Stay with that, coming out of, out of Pilt.
No, I'm suggesting that in the past it has, yes. What I'm suggesting for this year is we have a seven thousand dollar balance in that account, that we leave it, but know that if there becomes a need, that at that point, we will take it out of Pilt and infill.
So where are you going to come up with that? Are you going to take it off of the, of the sheriff's budget? Or where are you going to do, where are you going to come up with that seven thousand?
No, it's not coming out of anybody's budget. It's already there. That's the surplus from last year that was not spent. And so what I'm proposing is we just leave it there. We don't take it out. We don't, we don't add to it from anybody's budget. We just leave it there. But having addressed it at this meeting, agree that should a need arise and there's ten thousand dollars, that we will infill that account from Pilt at that time versus doing it now.
But seven thousand is sitting in Pilt earmarked for juvenile detention?
It's actually sitting in that juvenile detention account, already transferred from Pilt last year.
Question? What did we spend last year?
Forty-five seventy-seven. No, I'm sorry, forty-five eighty. Three dollars on personnel.
Okay.
I'm not sure how that worked out.
Do you foresee either when or Brenda, that's going to increase or?
Well, maybe that might be a topic for later. We got some crime data report yesterday from the Board of Crime Control, Kathy Rupert. And just in, just in, in Class B offenses, there's Class A and Class B. We took a hundred and twenty percent increase in, in crime, just in Class B offenses in Broadwater County from January through August to two thousand thirteen from the same time in two thousand twelve. There's a five hundred percent increase in motor vehicle theft. There's like a hundred, two hundred, I can tell you right now. Three hundred increase, percent increase in shoplifting, two hundred percent increase in theft from buildings, hundred and twelve and a half percent increase in aggravated assaults. We're talking about a hundred and twenty percent total increase in, in crime just in Class B offenses. That's not constituting our DUIs, it's not constituting our PFMA's. Those are, you know, some of those things.
What would be an example of Class A?
A PFMA, Part of Family Assault. There's, there's quite a significant increase. I think last year, for the entire year, we had twenty-six. As of this year, I think we've had thirty-two. So we're seeing a lot more violent crimes that are, that are starting to occur. We're starting to see a lot more violence and, and obviously working sex crimes. We've had at least twenty, twenty-five percent that I've invested, or twenty-five cases that I've investigated this year. And numerous of those are with juvenile offenders on another juvenile. So it's not, we've, we've kind of, we've worked with juvenile probation and some of the things that the county attorney boss, he's been working with them in. We've kind of avoided a lot of that juvenile detention. But as the times turn, obviously, you know, with everything going on in the world, you're obviously seeing that increase as well. So I don't think that this is a bullet we're going to be able to bypass for very long where we're going to end up starting to put people in, in juvenile custody more often than not just because it's just the way society is now. But we didn't see a decrease much in anything, so it's kind of nerve-wracking numbers to see that you're, we've got a decrease in, we had a twenty-five percent decrease in simple assault, a fifty percent decrease in arson, a hundred percent decrease in purse snatching, which is good, nobody's getting mugged in the park. And it looks like we had an eleven percent decrease in narc, in drug paraphernalia violations. Those are the only decreases we've, we've seen. Everything else is, just keeps going up. You know, so, which leads to other, obviously, conversations for future discussions as well, but.
Do you think the economy is playing a part in it?
I think a part of it is. I think it's become socially acceptable in our minds. You know, I'll use DC shooting. You know, you look at nine eleven, how horrific and how, how, how it changed the nation. And then you looked at Sandy Hook shooting and, and the shooting down in Aurora, California, movie theater. Those all had shock value. And I noticed with, with the DC shooting, there wasn't, the, the people in society aren't having that shock value anymore. Now it's becoming second nature. Mass shootings are not as horrific as they once were. They're horrific tragedies, they are. It's just people are going, we're getting accustomed to them because they're happening on such a frequent basis. And, and, and I think that's where we just, we're, we're building a tolerance to violent behavior probably more than we should. And our kids are learning at a young age, and you know, hence why my sex crimes are through the roof. Kids are becoming sexually active between ages of ten and twelve. That's a national study.
Ten and twelve?
Ten and twelve. I mean, if you look nationwide, twelve-year-old pregnancies are through the roof. You know, so that's just the environment we live in now. And obviously, Montana's a little behind the times in how it enforces some things and the laws that are written. But yeah, I think that we're going to see an increase in that probably. It's not going to surprise me, you know? So if that sheds light on anything.
So what do you think the chance of mass shooting in Broadwater County is?
Well.
It's a fifty-fifty.
Yeah, that's like, you know, throwing a dart at the board, you know? You know, we have, we have some, we have some issues with our juveniles. Bullying issue in our school system is probably the number one problem that I can see. And everybody's really taking a hands-off approach to it. The school doesn't want to really be involved. They want to turn a blind eye to it.
Why is that?
You know, I don't know. You know, it's like when you, when you do a drug search and you get on the P and tell everybody that you're going to send the drug dog through school at ten o'clock in the morning, you're not going to find drugs. Why? Because you just told everybody that's what you're looking for. It's, it's, it's putting an alarm in, in before you need to. But we do have a lot of bullying issues within the school and, and at very young ages. We have obviously a lack of mental health facilities within the state of Montana. And we have kids that come from people who, and I'm not trying to be mean, but we have a lot of kids in society that parents have severe drug and alcohol problems, and they were born with, with those issues. That's just reality. And temperaments fly, and, and it's not going to be, it's not going to be too long before we have a serious issue within our school system because one kid just had enough. And, and that's going to happen. We've had an arson in the school because the kid just had enough. Those things, it's, it's going to happen. We're not, we're not free from that. It's just when. That's what I've said all the time. It's not if, it's when, and, and you don't, you can't really prepare for it, so.
No. You can't, as much as we'd like to.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So we could revisit that, too. Maybe start with an overview and then come back point by point. The other one is liability insurance. We paid that out of Pilt as well. It's a hundred and hundred and twenty-two this year, I think, is the total, hundred and twenty-two, eight thirty? I'm asking you to memorize that. Never mind, Debbie. But there, it leaves us a fifty-six thousand dollar in the cash in that account. Instead of using the Pelt legal fund, we could actually start using that fund for legal fees. And we know there'll be some this year. So that was Nancy's suggestion to leave that cushion in there and then transfer the, the balance. and then transfer the balance for the bill for liability insurance from Pilt, as we've done in the past.
Makes sense.
Okay. The mosquito district is a special district, so that money cannot be taken out and used anywhere else. But they would like 15,000 to put into their CIP and then the remainder put into operations.
And they have that money sitting inside?
Mm-hmm. They have 33% reserves plus a surplus of about $27,000.
And so they wanted 15,000?
To the CIP for capital expenditure saving and then the remainder to operations. And if they don't use it, that will roll over. But if they have an ugly mosquito year next year, they have a surplus to work with to take care of it.
Makes sense.
Yeah, it's good planning. I think it's good financial planning.
How was mosquitoes this year, Virginia?
It was a nice, easy, smooth year.
Nice.
Just due to the drought, I mean, our water levels, the dryness that we had around here just wasn't sufficient for mosquito populations. There was isolated areas, but not enough to warrant a whole county or district-wide spraying like we've done. So if we're able to back off on that this spring or this summer, we'll utilize that stuff. Next year, if you go through, they're talking about it being a cold winter this year, which I don't know if that means snow along with cold or what. But if we do have that extra moisture next spring, it could get pretty ugly.
Question for Debbie. The Road Improvement District Fund, I don't see the River Road here. Could you double-check that? We have the silos and now we have River Road. That'll be small, but I'm wondering if it shouldn't be also on our final budget paperwork. That might be something to work with Doug about. And Nicole too.
That should be the unit.
Yeah, yeah, from last June roughly. And then on special districts, I think that, those were my only questions. Oh, another one, junk vehicle, Debbie? Revenue from inter-local shows a estimate of 41.58. We just signed the grant, so that should change to 7,770.49. It's minor, but it probably should also be in the paperwork.
Let's have a look again.
What's that?
Does that have a what?
And then just going to the floating mills. Weed by logged, we have to give them 6.6 mills. And they ended up the year with that with a surplus. Will end the year, for next year. Fair, also, they changed their budget a little bit, but they still had a surplus. So I guess one thing I should say before going into that overview. Elaine, looking at, and Franklin, looking at your mill numbers from last year, fiscal year 13. In order to find some extra mills to help with another area, we actually took the departments that had a surplus back to last year's mill numbers. So instead of Fair getting two mills, we popped them back to 1.96. And this is just a proposal, so we can certainly debate this if you guys want. Library ended up with an increase as well. So instead of giving them 3.75, we popped them back to 3.68. So for those first departments there that you guys see in the first clump, those all ended the year with a surplus, even using last year's mill totals. General Fund also did. So that's, and I have those totals if you want them, Elaine or Franklin. Airport, they were at .87 two years ago, got back down to zero. That was not their choice. So what I propose is that we increase them to what they would have been at, just like the other departments, and that is .87. They are saving for that new runway. And a couple of years ago, we made a, we had a chat with Bill Burgland, who's the grant writer for the airport with Pecha Engineering, and kind of made a plan to put a certain amount of money into their CIP every year. They also didn't get their, their budget, nor did they get a CIP infusion last year. Weed, of course, needs to be increased. Health insurance should go to the new number, the 19.18. And then the others, we can actually fiddle with the numbers a little bit because we have some wiggle room. But before we get into that, I just wanted to bring up another issue that we should talk about, and that's the senior center mills. They ended, they will end the year, next year, with a surplus of about $2,000. They need a new stove desperately. Washington Corporation is a little hesitant to work with us because of the issues with Rocky Mountain. Because of our partnership, we are being painted with the same brush. So I did look at Red Ant's Pants for a grant. Theirs are more targeted to economic development and entrepreneurship, not to stove for a senior center. So the stove is going to cost about $900. I propose that we work with Elsie, who is the chair of the Senior Center Dinner Club, and see about using some of that surplus for a new stove. And she wanted 300 put into an asset account or operations or capital. We could actually be putting 1,000 in, so it's a win-win still for them over there.
That stove they have is very dangerous right now.
It is, yeah. And it wouldn't cost anybody anything because it's already in their budget from savings from last year.
That makes sense.
Okay. So I will talk to Elsie about that, see if we can get that ball rolling. One question for you, Debbie. Will you check to make sure that if we put that surplus back into capital under expenses, that it's not a CIP, that it could be pulled out for a variety of uses rather than just capital expenditures? And if it, if it is, then we need to work with those department heads to see if they want that money to go into capital or operations? Or another expense line item? And that's it for the overview. I do have just a proposal. This is just the mills number proposal. And I want to kind of fly it by you guys. This is, we have two departments that are looking at ending the year, year of next year. If we keep the mills as they are on the fiscal year 14 sheet, they would end the year with a 3 and 4% reserve. And that is law enforcement and search and rescue. So what I propose is infusing some money into both those accounts. Starting with increasing the total, I married the two, law enforcement and search and rescue, so that Brenda can decide on her own how she wants the money to go. They're both her departments. First thing is I propose that we increase the number of mills, going to law enforcement to 25.61 total mills. That's a 5.03.
See that? Okay, yeah, man.
It's, it's an increase of 5.03 mills from last year. If you, in the sheet that we have, there's a formula to figure out what the budget will look like next year, and you take your revenues minus your expenditures, add it to, add that number to your leftover cash or your beginning cash, which is the same number. And that gives you what your leftover balance should be. So.
What is the mills going to be for law enforcement there? Is it 24?
25.61 total. And that's law enforcement and search and rescue. And then what I did on that sheet is I just added the other revenues. But I proposed adding from the detention center surplus, because they ended up using that 140 last year, which was their cash. But we were going to try and keep that to give it back to law enforcement. There's 82,647 left over with the detention center maintaining a 33% reserve. So I propose taking that over to law enforcement. And then to make up the difference, to get to that 140, I propose an infusion from Pilt of 57,353.
Why do you not want that surplus in detention center left in the detention center?
We certainly could, but we need to, I think we need to somehow get that 140 back to law enforcement because it is so far down. Somehow we've got to help get that fund back up to a point where it could operate. And right now, it's not there. The detention center has a very healthy-looking budget. As long as they continue on the track they're on, I believe that in six months' time, there will be another surplus and that we could build, I'd like to start a CIP for the detention center. But I think that with, having nearly lost it two years ago, we need to actually go slow. And I don't want to deplete law enforcement. That's the wrong word. Law enforcement was solid last year. We gave 292,000 to, 200 grand to law enforcement, 92 to the detention center to solidify those budgets, give them the 33% reserves. But we still have a hole that we've got to fill this year at some point. And I think maybe next year, we'll have those parameters set. Department heads live within your parameters, period. But this year, I think we need to help out law enforcement a little bit. So that's why I'm proposing that we take that surplus from the detention center and infill with Pilt to get to that 140. From the sheet, you can see then there's a total of revenue. The, there was an increase in expenditures to just over $1 million. If you do the math on down, there's a shortfall at the end of next year of $123,000. Without that infusion, there's a shortfall right now of 331. So we're whittling that down. It's, there's got to be a three-legged stool here. We can infuse those mills by taking from other departments, taking most of that from the general fund. And here's where those come from. These would be the proposed mills per department. Fair, library, ambulance, senior, mills, transportation, extension, and museums, stay as they were. Fiscal year 13 mill numbers. Airport goes to .87, weed to 1.6. Health insurance stays at the fiscal year 14 number. Detention center, we made a deal last year, or in our conversations, agreed that we would charge the taxpayers no more than $100,000 because that would be essentially what we would be paying as a community to house them down in Bozeman or Helena. So if you do that and reduce their mills to 7.39, you give them revenue from the taxpayers of just over $100,000. They still maintain their 33% reserve with that 82,647 surplus. Then if you go down to the general or all-purpose fund, I propose we reduce that by 6.37 mills.
Where are you going to cut that now?
Nowhere. The general fund, again, those of you in the general fund, good management. There's a surplus, a nice, healthy surplus. This gets into the surplus, but it doesn't do so to such a point that it hampers or shows a long-term devastating effect on general fund. There's also places that we can target savings still in there. But that is how I come up with an increase to law enforcement and search and rescue to 25.61 mills.
So what's general fund? What are you proposing for that?
39.24. And that should not result in individual departments having to cut. It's, it's cutting into the surplus. I just, I don't see any other way. And if anybody else does, I'm certainly open to suggestions and constructive ideas or alternatives. As is, by using last year's numbers, the surplus from the general fund, and surplus is over that 33% reserve, ends up being... Can we have it with you, Debbie? You probably don't do that because it was old numbers. Well, maybe I took it out. I was working on it yesterday.
Was that close to 300,000?
It was.
300,000?
Yeah, I just don't remember the exact number. I probably left it in on my desk somewhere. But it does, it does diminish the surplus, which, you know, we'll have to watch moving forward. But I do not see where it shows any kind of a long-term negative effect by taking that money out. And if, if it does, you know, we'll have to all look at it and find it or else rerun, rerun the numbers. Rerun those numbers. Then we have to revisit. A couple of places where... Never mind. So I'll just let that sink in.
So we're going to increase law enforcement by 20,000?
That's my proposal.
Does that go be an out?
Well, we'll have to target some savings or find further revenue.
What do you think, Brenda?
Well, my, my first question is, with that 140 transfer this year, last year, and then infusing it with Pilt this year, aren't we going to be in the same boat next year? We're going to be down that 140? That would be my first question.
No, I don't see it that way.
Last year's expenditure budget was 100, or 1.1 million seven. This year's is 1 million five. I didn't spend because of our conversation with Harold Bligh. Once you take $1 of cash, it takes two to make it up. You know, that's, that's my biggest concern. And if you infuse with Pilt this year, then you'll have to infuse with Pilt next year. I mean, I...
Makes sense. That was never your money last year, and I think that's where the confusion comes in. That was always supposed to be the detention center's money. So it shouldn't have been, it shouldn't have mattered to your budget, especially after we gave you the infusion from Pilt of $200,000?
It did though, because as of August, the transfer was made after the budget was set.
And it should have been gravy.
The budget was, the budget was set with that 140 in there, and then it was knocked right down.
Okay, even.
We're going to come up with this to take care of that shortfall.
What's that?
We're going to pull it out to take care of that shortfall besides doing it for Pilt all the time. We've got to get it back in the right. Right figure.
If, if the general fund stayed on track, um, there would be a surplus over the thirty-three percent of about two-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand. So, uh, there would be cash carryover. It's a little bit less than we've been doing, um, but it's still a healthy number.
To be in the general.
Right, right.
So that's money you put in for the shortfall right? After maybe go in and take care of that shortfall?
No, because you don't want to deplete that fund. Every fund has to live within its parameters.
Right, but we're, it's already was put into that shortfall last year.
Right.
It's got to be brought back up, and so it's got to come out of someplace. It can't be just figuring PILT all the time, right?
I agree. I agree. I, I believe this has to be the last year for that.
I think what it's going to boil down to is the reality, we're going to have taxes have to go up. Whether it's general fund or public safety. Take from one, give to the other. We're going to have teeter totter every year. Take from one, give to the other, take from one, give to the other. I think the reality, if you don't want to use PILT, taxes are going to have to go up. Somewhere. The floating mills will have to go out to cover those teeter totters.
Can we do that without evading the people?
That I don't know.
I don't think so.
That I don't know.
No, and that's, we certainly can't. Um, two years ago, we brought in, Brenda brought in Dave Klaus, and we brought in Dan Clark to put together an eighteen-month strategy to, uh, create some study circles around the community, educate people on the importance of public safety. Uh, to determine what would be included in public safety. Uh, Dave had suggested it be a requested mill for not only law enforcement, also perhaps the detention center and also fire. We had two meetings, um, we three showed up to both of them, um, but that's it. You know, this, if there's... We solidified that account last year. I'm proposing that we infuse it to help it this year. But at some point, there's got to be increased revenues from places other than the citizens unless the citizens say yes, we agree to pay more. Or there's got to be cuts in spending. There's two areas that we can target cuts in spending. One is maintenance. Mike has put some additional in his budget because he would like long-term to take all the maintenance from all the different departments and put it in his budget. That will allow him to buy better in bulk and save money in the long run. Um, he's already been paying for a lot of the maintenance for the detention center and the law enforcement section of the courthouse. So that money was left in the public safety budget. It, it could be saved. It's a cushion. Uh, I propose we leave it in there as a cushion, but it is a targeted area for savings, looking at the budget. The other one is IT. IT with Morrison Merrily is probably the most expensive way to go. They're at ninety-five an hour last time they came to talk to us, and that includes an hour from Helena to here and an hour back. That's a hundred and eighty dollars before you even get started. Um, there is, uh, several different options. We do have an employee who's been volunteering her time for IT. She's extremely busy. But we also have a gentleman in White Sulfur Springs who does ET, IT, who's interested in coming here. He works for the state, so he's got the correct licenses, and his fees are roughly half. There's another area of targeted savings, um, is IT.
Do we have to hear anything about his reputation?
We'd have to, if we want to pursue that, we'd have to put out a RFP. We'd have to call references. We'd have to follow up on that. But there are other alternatives to Morrison Merrily. Without a question, even if we don't go with the guy in White Sulfur, there are other alternatives to Morrison Merrily. Um, we're seeing bills of about three-hundred-and-fifty dollars. That's an hour of work. It's, but we're paying for three because of the travel. That's an area that we can help that fund to save some money. By going through and finding those kinds of savings, they do add up. That's just two off the top of my head.
What, what services are we getting for Morrison Merrily?
IT is computer services. Repair, programming, um, marrying to, uh, equipment, that kind of thing.
They're with us all the time. I mean, we have them all the time. And it's, we have...
Complicated systems.
Yeah, we have a complicated, and this is something that I, I guess, I, I look at, i- from a county whole aspect, is that every office has at least two computers in it. And why we don't have an IT person on site is beyond me. You know, we have issues...
Staff, IT staff.
Yeah, I, yeah, yeah. Somebody who's actually a, a county employee of IT, and that's all they do. Because our computers, our, our dispatch, our, our SEJ and everything is computerized. They shut down, and we were paying this guy an emergency fee to come out and get it going again. And those, that's when those seven, eight, nine, twelve, thirteen, twenty, twenty-one hundred dollar bills start coming through the door. Because we, we can't operate. If our computers are down, they're down, they're done, and we're done. And our phones are run through a computer, for goodness sakes. It's, there's a lot of things that go into detail that, so, I, you know, I don't know how it can be done, but that's to look for, to solve today's problem, to look towards future problems. That's probably the best result you're going to get for the best bang for your buck. Morrison Merrily, they're great folks. They're expensive. And, you know, it's, it's one of those things. It's, it's a double-edged sword. If you want your computer to be able to function and do your work, you're going to have to call them. And that's, that's a tough pill to swallow. Um, we, we fret about it all the time. You know, it's a, it's, it's, it's a lot of money. And, uh, you know, if there's a way that can be done, boy, that's, that's a lifesaver in and of itself. So that's my opinion, my opinion only, so use it for what it's worth.
And, and whoever we get has to be familiar with the SWIFT system, SEJ, and all, all of the programs that we use over there in law enforcement. It just can't be anybody.
Virginia?
I think it's just to kind of follow up on that is, you know, I know the departments, when they have problems, call Morrison Merrily in. But then sometimes they don't look at the whole network system within the courthouse and end up creating more problems that then are a result for the rest of us to have a less productive day because then we're sitting there trying to troubleshoot, figure out what the heck happened. Our system was up and running, and then like that it went down. And it's because they'll come in and change something, or they'll change an IP address. They don't look at what's going on with the whole system. And so that's where, yeah, it would be nice to have somebody more on site that understands how all this works together, not that they just come in and choose a number randomly and go with it. So...
That makes sense. And we talked to Morrison Merrily at one time about doing the whole thing, but it's cost prohibitive.
That's right.
And there's a lot of people that are out there that are pretty computer savvy that have the credentials to do so. And like talking with Garth and, and Jason who used to work there, what they get paid an hour to actually fix your stuff and what Morrison Merrily charges is astronomical. Uh, I mean, there's a huge increase in that, uh, ninety-five dollars an hour, and I don't think thirty-five of that goes to the technician. It all goes to Morrison Merrily. Obviously, it's, it's a profit for business, you know, or business for profit. And, and that's understandable, but, you know, it, what Virginia's saying is, you know, there's times where our computer shuts down, Morrison Merrily comes down, da-da-da, they get it working, but they shut our printer off. Why don't you shoot me in the foot? You know, or they set things up and then your computer fries, you lose all your programming. You know, for a long time, the sheriff couldn't get into her email. You know, that's kind of a, a, kind of a crucial thing for her. Especially when everybody corresponds to her email. Seems like kind of childish in a way, but it's, it's really, there's a lot of important information that does go through that. And when you can't get in there because she gets a new computer, and then she can't listen to the radio or the nine-one calls, when people say, hey, we have a problem or whatever, she can't review that, or she can't even find her files because they disappeared. Those are all problems. And, uh, you know, I, I, there's, I understand there's a dollar attached to everything we do in society, but at some point, we're going to have to bite a bullet here and, and do what's best for, I guess, all county employees. And that's just my opinion, of course, but I think we all struggle with the computer aspects of things anyhow, so...
What do you think it costs to hire somebody, one person, full-time?
I think you get somebody respectable, uh, it, it's going to be a chunk of change. If you're going to have somebody who knows what they're doing, who's going to do the quality work, you're going to need, uh, I, you're, you're, you're looking at a chunk of change. And that's just all there is to it. Uh, you know, if you can go to Morrison Merrily like thirty-five bucks an hour, you're, you know, you're not going to tempt them with fifteen, fifty, or, or even twenty bucks probably. Computer guys, they know the money's out there. You're going to need somebody who's going to want to be involved for the right reasons and pay them respectfully, but not over the top either, so...
I think it'd be worthwhile to check with some of the other counties and see what they pay their IT people. Because a lot of the counties do have technical people right on, that are county employees.
I know the city of Helena's got like two or three, uh, that work right within the law enforcement center, and they're lifesavers, so...
So where do you find somebody that knows all, all of your programs?
They would have to familiarize with them. Because they are...
They're not out there.
Everyday.
But that would be any of our departments. I mean, some, we're going to have specialized aspects, things that we do. You know, that sheriff's not going to know about what we do, so it's going to be something that somebody's got to have, come on site and learn, you know, get up to speed on it. But I think it can be done.
It's going to be a learning curve, for sure.
You can possibly check with the school and see what their IT person runs on a year. Because I'm sure they've got all different...
And most, most programs now are window-based anyway, so they're, they're, they're functional in most aspects. They might operate a little differently, but the groundwork is still pretty much the same, so... Our SWIFT program, system, you know, is, I think they're trying to get to a Windows base. They're still a, a different outdated version, but, you know, that's, that is, that's, you know, that is what it is, but...
When you advertise, you just put that in the advertisement that you need to know, you know? And if they need to go out and get trained for it to apply for the job, then that's what they do.
And I, I think if you open it up, like, I honestly, I think if you open it up and, and put it out on a statewide level, you're going to find people who want to want, get away from things that, you know, the, the crime and slam that happens in Yellowstone County on a daily basis anymore, who has good computer skills and is wanting to get to somewhere smaller where there's a little better quality of life for their children and their family. And, and those are the things that you're going to kind of use as selling point, is those qualities of life, the school system, and, and just the, the recreation aspect of Broadwater County. Those, and, and even a good health insurance program, uh, package that we do have, that's going to be your selling point. That's, we're not going to give you lots of money. You're not going to become Donald Trump, but we're going to give you quality life that's better than where you're at right now. And that's, that's going to be where the key is, so...
How could that work out with the school? Let's say a person, say, near the county.
Let me tell you, a person at the school, and I won't mention any names. I wouldn't want it here, I'm sorry. That, that's all I'll say.
I, I will say to your, to your question, and we did look into that two years ago, uh, utilizing that person with the school. And I, it, I think it was a different person, because I think he left. I forget his name now. Uh, he was interested, but the thing is, is he's full-time over there. Uh, so he didn't have the, the time to come over here. One of the things, we had a, a whole day on cyber liability at the last macro conference. Do you know how many counties raised their hands when it was asked, how many of you have IT that are, uh, capable to do cyber liability? All but two. The next question was how many of you have, don't have IT departments? Two counties raised their hand, and Broadwater County is one of them. One of the reasons that we cannot deplete the general fund, uh, is because of exactly what we're talking about. If we were to hire an IT person, a new employee to come in, chances are at least a big chunk of that, if not half or a hundred percent, is going to come from the general fund. So we cannot be, uh, taking the general fund down to the negatives, um, because that would be our responsibility, at least partially.
I have a question for Bill. Do you have a, a full-time IT person at the hospital?
Uh, no. We have a, a person that comes in. We, we get IT support from the vendor that supplied the, uh, the system that, uh, we use at the hospital. And, uh, and they come in occasionally, but there, there, there's, there's both software and hardware. We utilize somebody on a contract basis, call them in, kind of like you do for the hardware. The software is a contract we have, uh, with a company that specializes in, in healthcare systems. And they're the ones that, that troubleshoot the software.
It's a good idea while it lasted. Thank you.
And I, I think it is a good idea. I think, I think what Bill illustrates though is we need to add, if we're going to go this direction, and that would have to be something we talk about as a board and, and agree on and vote on. But we would have to advertise for somebody who knows your system, but also somebody who can work with state computers, because we've got state upstairs. Um, so, you know, we need somebody that's also well-rounded at, with the expertise. And, and I think we can find them, uh, but we need to actually advertise and decide that's the direction we want to go.
They'd also have to know CSA, which is our accounting system.
Treasure of the house. If you back this person from White Sulfur now, that you mentioned, is there a possibility that he'd come in and can handle this too with whatever else he's doing?
I have no idea, but I know it's worth talking to him. Those are questions we need to ask a professional. But, uh, at this point, we haven't even gotten to a point of being able to talk to him.
It might be worth a while to do that. Because I think, there's no doubt, everybody needs IT help, period. The school has a full-time gentleman. And I'm sure with that many teachers and programs, they keep him very busy. This gentleman in White Sulfur, does he do their school, or the sheriff's office, or what?
He works for the state part-time. He's part-time, um, retired. Uh, he works for the county. Uh, Ashlyn Jones with, uh, Wick was over there and met him. And it was the health department that actually brought him to my attention. Um, and I just talked to him on the phone, that's it. So I don't, you know, I am not at all savvy enough in IT to even know the questions to ask. Um, I mostly listened, told him what our needs are and listened. Um, I think what we would need to do is, you know, go through the process and advertise for specifically what we want, and then follow up with references. So we make sure we get somebody who's, who can do all the things we need them to. And as far as the systems, the county systems, give them the time they need to go through the learning curve that every new employee goes through to learn how that works and, and who works with who and, and how.
This is probably a stupid question, but somebody from the sheriff's office, how long would it take somebody to become familiar with your systems? Just to brush us?
Well, and, and that's, I mean, it's, from, from an operational aspect, it, it takes a while. But if you, for an IT aspect, for them to go in and fix the things that they need, really, they could probably get it done in a couple of days. Because IT guys, they understand the working, the working structures of the computer system. And it's, it, it, when you, we have the basics down, everything else is just trying to figure out the operation aspect of it. So it's not, they're not actually getting in figuring out how to do things. They're just knowing, okay, we have an issue here. And there, there is technical support that they work with out of, out of the SWIFT system as well, or even at, at the state level, that can help them through that. But really, I don't, a few days, they, they probably have it figured out to where, um, they know exactly when you call, yeah, this is a problem. And they do that with me, but then I, you know, I get in there and I hit the wrong button, all of a sudden, everything starts flashing and shuts down, and, and then I got to calm down here.
And the girls over in this building holler.
Yeah. Well, and the girls next door holler at me too, you know, because they're like, hey, that was working. I'm sorry. So, uh, you know, it's, I'm not computer savvy. I can, I can fix a lot of things, but, um, you know, that, it's just to the point now that everything's changing, everything's evolving. I mean, you have Excel, you have Microsoft, you have SWIFT, you have SEJ, and you have, you know, it, goodness gracious, it's, it's a nightmare.
And I think most of us are that way. Know just enough to be dangerous, to be honest.
Yeah. I can screw it up like no other. I mean, I'm, I'm really good at it.
We all can.
You know, and we have thirteen, fourteen, maybe fifteen computers within our facility, you know, so it's not, I mean, it's not, and we have one big server. And when, when the server goes down, we're down, and, and, you know, everything just kind of stops. So that's a bad thing. And that's not even talking about the ninety, ninety-six miles of wire that go to the brains of the operation that are upstairs, so, uh, you know, there's, there's, there's lots of technical stuff in that building that we need, you know? It's like when our jail door, a computer went, uh, that was bad. You know, when you can't open a door to any of the facility, uh, with a computer or shut it with a computer, that's, that definitely, uh, causes a huge issue, so... You know, when you can't open a door to any of the facility, uh, with a computer or shut it with a computer, that's, that definitely, uh, causes a huge issue, so.
There must be people who just have to be correct contacts, I think, people that we've, we've been talking to, I guess. About what contact you usually advertise for, I'm sure there's a.
I'm not sure, I mean.
Well, if you use, we use a job service.
Yeah, there's a source of resources.
I mean, that, yeah, I mean, that's a huge one. And, and there's, there's a couple more of those search engines out there where people who are looking for a particular job or career, they can go in and see what's available. And it's not, like, you go to job services, you look at law enforcement, you're gonna find everybody who's hiring for law enforcement or public safety. You're not gonna look at the guy looking for the cook at Burger King. You know, you're just, they, they, they're more site-specific now to what the needs are for the person who's looking, so.
What is Laura, where can we find the money to do this though?
We got it. Um, but I think, uh, it, it's, it's just what we were talking about, it's in the general fund. Um, we would have to determine all the ins and outs, put out an advertisement, determine what the salary would be, and also determine how much time would be spent where. Is this a fifty-fifty split between the sheriff's department and general fund? Is this a hundred percent covered by the general fund? Is this a, you know, three-quarter split between a third, a third, a third, I mean? I don't know, we have to figure that out. Uh, where the money's gonna come from, it depends on, on the package. Um, you know, I, when you look at those, we have, I would say every other week, we have a bill from Morris and Merrily for at least three hundred and forty-six dollars, that was the last one. When you look at two hours of that, a hundred and eighty bucks was just their driving time. We're spending a lot of money to plant somebody's butt in a car seat. Um, I think that what Winn has brought up is, and Virginia as well, is a smart move. Um, and I think that we can get creative with that. Could an IT staff person also be a part-time grant writer? Do we have the needs for a full-time IT? I don't know. Could they take on another part-time need for the county? I don't know, these are things that I don't think today is appropriate to, um, to do. I think we all three have some homework that we need to do. First of all, understanding our IT needs. And then we need to come together and have a discussion on that particular subject and decide how to move forward. Um, but yeah, if we wanna, if we want to move forward with that, um, we have the money. The rumors that this county is broke, folks, is absolutely one-hundred percent false, period. Um, even with removing those mills from the general fund, we would have a surplus over our thirty-three percent reserve of over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, you know, that's not one person's salary by any means, even for IT. Um, I would think for half of that, we could get somebody qualified. So, that's, I guess that's my only thought on that. Um, I think it's a great idea, I think we need to do some homework, but we don't have the ability to just do it.
I guess I would ask the sheriff's office in Virginia also to be thinking of, what do you see that person doing?
Well, I think, and I think that's, I think even Virginia will probably agree with this, is once you get somebody who's, who's standard and set in place, and once they get the whole network where it needs to be, I think then, that's where those part-time things come into play. Because when it's working right, and they understand every aspect of it, when you have a little flaw, it's not gonna take them, it's not, it's not gonna shut everybody down, it's not gonna take them all week, he's gonna know exactly, yep, he's done deal. And then, then go back and do work on something else. They can be that second-hand into something. I think initially out of the gate, you're gonna spend six months trying to get this network into a place where all the updates need to be in place, all the programs need to be updated, or whatever, security software, whatever might be that needs to take place. Give them a good open window, make sure that gets done. But then after that, it's gonna be more of a maintenance-type thing in a, in a, in a, definitely a crisis situation where something's gone wrong and now we need you. But for the most part, I think you're opening a window to where they obviously have time to do something more effective with their time other than watching a computer screen, uh, doing nothing, so.
Well, it's like, you know, Broadwater County really doesn't have their own, own county website. And I mean, I have people all the time say, um, where can I access septic permits? I said, you know, don't you have them online? I go, no, you know, and it takes me time to find them, whereas if they could go online and print out a diagram, you know, they're set to go. And that's the same way with, uh, food inspect, inspect, you know, health inspection reports. Some people wanna look at those things, they have to come into the office. If they were all posted online, then, you know, it's all done. Yeah, but having a website that's maintained and updated every time we do any, make any little change to a form, um, you know, being able to access stuff easier than on the Townsend website. I mean, most, every county has their own private county website, you know.
Right.
Well, the fair and the rodeo border are in the process of putting that out on their, on their own level, so. I think we're just behind the, we're behind the times, and, and, you know, it's, it, it, and understand change is difficult for every aspect. Yeah.
A regular hired IT person there all the time. So, you know, and they figure those things out, and they put them on those virtual things out in space that they're all there and you can access them anytime and, yeah.
Mike, you had a question?
Yeah, I just would like to make a suggestion to the commissioner, put together a working group with the different agencies and come back in a, in a month or two and, and explore this more depth. You don't have time this morning to make that decision.
No.
We're kinda off on a go-kart right now.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Getting us back to the, the budget, uh, one thing that we did forget to address is a letter that we got some time ago from the Weed Board. Um, the Weed budget is, um, also very healthy, and it looks like, um, there's about a thirty-three thousand dollar surplus after the reserves, the thirty-three percent reserves. And that is due to, um, again, smart budgeting, uh, Scott has some, um, come on up, Scott, if you would. If you have your own care. He's also got some, you can stay there. He's also got some, uh, additional revenue coming in from rental equipment that he's started getting. So he's done some very proactive things and that has resulted in his surplus. The letter we have from the Weed Board is dated August twentieth, and it reads, "The Broadwater County Weed Board would like a market adjustment made to Scott Dunning's salary. We ask his salary be adjusted to seventeen point fifty an hour. Salary rate is based on other Montana Weed Board leaders' wages. These counties are as follows, Ponderay is sixteen fifty, excuse me, seventeen fifty an hour. Stillwater is twenty dollars and seventy cents. Jefferson is nineteen point seven two. Sweetgrass is eighteen point fifty. And Sheridan is nineteen an hour. Signed by every board member. And with the new CBA, we can do increases in salaries for proven market adjustments. Um, and if you wanna see this letter again, you certainly can. Um, but that's, I think that's all we need to address as far as, as the particulars with the budget. Um, and unless anyone else has anything. And we just have a, those lists of questions, figuring out the floating mills, the health insurance question, uh, salaries. Um, the two thousand eight increase that's been in Pilt that you and I both wanted to marry into the mills, that was done this year through the general fund. Um, and I would propose that this year, we actually pay these, the raises, the forty-five cents an hour. I think we should do that out of Pilt. And I think it should come out of Pilt, because Pilt is not tax dollars. And I think our, our employees deserve it, and I think it's easier after a year to wrap it into their budgets rather than to be hit right now with that. So, um, Pilt is paid for by and large by services going into the national parks or using national park, uh, campgrounds, that kind of thing. Um, so, you know, nobody can say that it's, and, and nobody with any knowledge can say that Pilt is taxpayer dollars. So, um, I think that's it, I think that's all the things we need to discuss and decide on.
Sounds like we have our work.
You know, it, to me, it sounds, well, I've been absorbed in this, I've been working on this a lot, and so, to me, it seems very easy. Um, but, what would you guys think?
So does that mean that, you know, the budgets that we have put forward are probably going to be funded, or is that gonna change?
As far as the proposal that I suggested, yes, without changes. Um, for general fund, yes, for the individual budgets, for, uh, special districts, for, um, road, which is by itself, uh, yes.
Okay. How about the rest of us?
Um, we can work on that. Brenda, my, my proposal is to infuse your budget with, what, like, um, almost two hundred grand? Uh, give you five point oh-two more mills than, uh, you've had. It gets you up to thirty-three mills total for public safety. And, um, also infuse you with, uh, the detention center surplus of eighty-two grand and Pilt of fifty-seven. Um, and then beyond that, uh, you know, I think we're more than happy to work with you on how we can, uh, help you with the, the balance, if you have any other ideas.
Back to my original question, infusing it from Pilt with a hundred and forty thousand will put it in the same boat next year as it is this year?
No, it won't. Um, it will be, uh, added to your cash. Um, it, it was never supposed to be in your budget last year, so it shouldn't have been spent last year.
Okay.
It's, uh, actually a surplus, it's not even a surplus, it's an additional hundred and forty added to your budget this year. Um, it, it shouldn't have been used last year, it shouldn't be an issue this year.
But it was figured in, in the cash balance, the starting cash balance of this year.
It shouldn't have been in there last year, so it shouldn't have been.
It was though, is what I'm saying, it wasn't transferred until August of this year.
So then you should be running a hundred and forty to the good, because you had an additional hundred and forty last year. So, you know, um, I, I'm open to any ideas, uh, I don't know if you guys have any, um.
Well, and I, the public safety is obviously a nightmare, okay, let's just be honest. We're, 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 we're the stepchildren of the, of the county, we understand that. We're, we're problematic, we're the biggest entity, we have the most staff, we spend the most dollars, I understand that. The same note is that we gotta have, somewhere in the lines here, we're gonna have to have a discussion about, uh, manpower issue. Uh, obviously, the numbers that I, I presented with you from the Board of Crime Patrol this morning show we have an increasing problem within our county. The more with less has gone on for a long time. And we're at a stage, and the county attorney and, and Ms. Silver have had discussions about an investigative position. The sheriff and I have had discussions about the investigative position. The county attorney and myself have had discussions about investigative position, because it's getting to a point of where that's becoming a necessary evil, okay? Patrol guys are patrol guys, and, and they're out there because of things like we're having a coroner's inquest for next Wednesday is because of the guys who have mental health conditions who decide to shoot at cops, okay? Those things that, those are getting more and more frequent, we lose a law enforcement officer every day in America. It's getting to the point, that's, again, a tolerance that people are getting accustomed to. So we're gonna have to have, at some point, figure out something that's gonna work best. I don't have the answers, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying that we need to sit down as a group and, and, and come to, come to some sort of agreement on how to make things better, because public safety is ultimately what does bring people into a county. They don't wanna come to a violent county, they don't wanna come to a county where they're gonna get robbed and, and beaten or anything else. They wanna come where they're gonna feel safe. And that's a, it's a huge, that's a huge thing, and we're seeing those increases. Ask Ms. Bossy, she's gonna show you that she, last year, we think we filed thirty-seven felonies for the entire year, and we're over forty, and she hasn't filed probably six of my cases that are felonies right now. Our felony offense numbers are going through the roof on a very rapid level. That's reality, and, and somehow, we're gonna have to work around that. Like I said, I don't have the answers, I'm just putting, putting it out there, so everybody, in the, in the notations of thoughts on how things are gonna happen, that's part of it. The next thing, obviously, is we, we do have a lot of public comment on tax collection. I understand that. And, and it's, it's a burden in, in some people's side, because the fact is, is it needs to get done, but we don't have the manpower, the resources to do it. We've had discussions with Treasurer's Office, sheriff and I have had discussions, I don't know if we had any discussions about it or not. But that's something that's, is eventually's gonna have to take place as well. We, we understand there's four hundred and eighty homes out there that haven't paid their taxes, you know, shame on them, but somebody's gonna have to come and do that. That is not a responsibility, that's a, if you look at lawsuits under law enforcement or agencies, it, it, the first one is jail. That's the first number-one thing that, that sheriff's offices get sued for. Number two is simple process, and number three is use of force. When you look at that, you're going, okay, this is not something we're just gonna tread lightly on. We're not gonna put the county or the sheriff's office in jeopardy of being sued if we screw up and do this wrong. People's Fourth Amendment rights of legal search and seizure coming to play, the Title X of the, of the Montana Constitution coming to play. So we have to, we have to really take a, a, a really strong look at how we wanna proceed down that road with what we have available to us right now. And, and it's been the key for us is to operate the best we can and provide the best services we can with what's been available and provided to us. But that only goes so far. And, and I thought, so, not for discussions for today, I'm just putting it out there, these are the future conversations. They're, they're gonna need to take place, not just for the sheriff's office, but for the, for the county of Broadwater and the community of Townsend. In order for these to take place, there's gonna have to be some changes. So, that's all I had, okay?
An officer to collect on taxes, say, on mobile homes, takes one officer full-time, is that correct?
At least. There's six assigned to the civil office in Lewis and Clark County. It's, there's one guy who does strictly tax collection, there's one that does strictly sheriff sales, there's one that does just serving order protections and, and things of that nature. Uh, and then there's, there's three admin assistants that help with that whole thing. So it's, it's not a, it's not something that Lewis and Clark takes lightly. I'm not really, uh, familiar with what Gallatin County's doing in, in, in their civil division. I have never talked with Sheriff Gookin about that. Um, I just, being from Lewis and Clark County, is where I put my foot in the, in the dirt of, of law enforcement, I know what that office does, and, and I'm still in close contact with them. So, there's a lot, there's a lot that goes to it. Unfortunately, there's not a lot of training in regards to civil process, um, that, they just don't, which is amazing. As much as we get sued for it, you'd think that, uh, we'd be more trained on, there's not. We spend most of our time and effort on officer safety, because that's gonna be a big bill attached to it as well, and we, we know that. You lose an officer, it costs lots of money. Um, you know, this inquest is gonna cost us some money. Uh, it's just, that's just how things go now, so. Um, you know, I, I wish I could say we could, we could mix it all in, but really, we can't. And, you know, Ms. Bossy, um, has, has, has been getting on the ball with doing subpoenas and stuff, and that takes time. We have fifty-one, fifty-one subpoenas in two days, uh, that takes time off of everybody's plate to get that done, because we have to do that within a, within a certain timeframe. They have to be served within seven days of the trial. Um, and sometimes they get there ten days before the trial. So, it's a hustle and bustle to get it done, and, and, and those things take place, and that's the stuff that most who don't realize what law enforcement's out there doing, so.
One of the things that I would like to see from you guys, from your department, is a proposal. If you have some needs, like an investigative position, and you don't have the funding, what I would like to see is a proposal brought forth. Not just, we need more money, but these are the facts, we would like to do this to address those facts, this is how we propose, will you help us and propose that partnership? Uh, that gives us something to work with.
Well, and I think this, and, and I agree. And I, and I think right now, this has been a conversation that's been going on for maybe a month, month and a half. It hasn't been a long-term conversation, the need's been there for a long period of time. It's just, we've kinda just, you know, for example, I work probably nine percent of all the sex crimes that occur in our county. Um, I also do the fire investigation aspect as well. Well, investment in white collar crimes too, but anyhow, uh, there's, I, I think we, there's gotta be some research done. Because the fact is, is it's, what, what are we looking for, what do we want? Um, I think it's gotta be a very detailed job description, so there's no wavering one way or the other. I think we, we're, we get pretty generalized in what we ask of our people, and it leaves too many open doors. Um, in investigation, in an investigative position, I think it needs to be pretty tight. I, I think you need to have, the, the line's drawn in the sand, this is what I expect, this is what you need to do. And I think in, in an aspect, it also needs to come from the county attorney's office in regards to what is she expecting, uh, uh, from a case file? What is she wanting, what, what are we missing as of this time? What's gonna make it work smoother? And, and I think it's, it's a group effort, it's not an isolated issue, it's, it affects the whole justice system from the courts, the judge's office, the clerk of court's office, uh, county attorneys, and the sheriff's office. And I think in, in order for that to be an effective position, I think we just really need to spend some time, talk about what needs to happen, what people's wishes are, and what can we put in place to make it a more feasible, um, objective than, than what we've got right now. Um, same as a civil process, you know, what, what do we need, what are we looking at, what are our demands? It's, it's an unknown in tax collection for, for majority of the sheriff. It's an unknown in tax collection for majority of the sheriff's office right now because we've never done it. You know, our sheriff sales, I can't tell you the last time we did a sheriff sale outside of doing it for selling a home or a chunk of land. And so, there's some things that take place, there's a lot of work that takes place. And I think that just, we need to find whatever hurdle we wanna jump first and then work on that and fine-tune that in a place that we can say, okay, this is what we're gonna do. Obviously, a detective, you can't use a new guy. It's somebody who's gotta be seasoned, understand the whole thing, and be able to have that self-motivation to be on task. And so, that kind of restricts our pool quite a bit in how things work. So, lots of things that need to go into play, lots of different focal points to look at. And I think just, I think if everybody just kind of thinks about it for a little bit, I don't think it's gonna change how life is right now. But maybe in the next year, next fiscal year, before this, end of the next budget, this is a conversation we need to have. And I think a detailed job description for Debbie's part is gonna eliminate a lot of issues because I think that's where we get ourselves in a bind is we've got some really generalized job descriptions and we've kind of gone back and reinvented the wheel a little bit too much. Instead of just doing it right the first time, we've put a Band-Aid over a bullet wound. And we've paid some consequences for that, as far as I can see. So, like I said, that's just my thoughts. It's kind of where our discussions, the sheriff and I, have gone into forward movement with the sheriff's office and public safety, so.
Well, what I've heard is we've set two goals for ourselves as a county. One is to put together a working group and expect a proposal and a discussion regarding IT possibilities. Second goal is to wait on or expect a proposal to be coming from law enforcement and the county attorney's office for what their overall needs are to address the changing dynamics and demographics. So, with those realized, I think we should get back to the floating mills and the immediate budget issues. Because we have a deadline coming, we can recess, certainly work on this this afternoon or tomorrow. Next week, we're busy, we're at a conference, and we have to have this done by Monday unless we want our employees to have a sixty-dollar hit in their paychecks. So, just keeping an eye on that ball. I would suggest that we move forward with the immediate budget issues and start working on those goals when we come back on the thirty. If that's agreeable.
Right, right. And I'm not willing to let the employees take the sixty dollars for it.
No.
I'm just not.
I agree.
I think we have great employees, they all work hard. And they have people of Broadwater County who there's utmost concern. No matter what they do, I'm just not willing to take that for it. Of giving that hit.
I agree.
Yes, I have this question. If this is accepted as this is, is it not possible later, things changed, to do a budget amendment to figure out how to fence on the I-stra, the public safety or the surcause at a later date, at a budget amendment? Is that something that's option, that an option? Do you guys, that's what you guys can do?
Absolutely. We've done this before. There's a new position that's needed, I can't think of the latest new position that we have a need for, but say we did and we had to address this somehow. Yeah, like a proposal comes forward from law enforcement and the county attorney. Yeah, we can address that, we can do a budget amendment at that time.
I have one quick question for you. Okay, this one's showing that I'm at point seven-nine mills. And so, what, where does that figure come from? Where did that figure come from on the mills?
That's what you had last year.
That's what I had last year.
Yeah. The sheet, you got, you didn't get the one with the proposal, but the proposal is for you to get one point six over the five voted because that's what is required by law. So, the proposal for you for next year, six point six.
Is a coincidence?
Yeah.
Okay. And that would be, that would be this, your budget request, is what, okay. Okay, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, I didn't think about putting those on the numbers. But if anybody wants a copy of this, you're welcome to it. I just didn't bring that many, I didn't think of it.